Mr. Chairman, we're live.
On occasion, I will call on Dr. Phant.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for being our guide and our direction. Even in difficult times, you're our comforter. You give us hope. Oh God, as we gather together tonight, we ask that you help us remove ourselves from self and fill us with your presence and your spirit. Guide us so that we make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. These petitions we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next, on the agenda, we have appearances, current agenda items.
Before that, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll make a motion that we approve our minutes from our August 19th meeting.
That would probably help with that. Approval of minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. We'll now move to appearances on current agenda items. Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, the first speaker is Greg Valente. His topic is 10(c)(text amendment) Paris Mountain.
Welcome, Mr. Valente.
Thank you. In my previous statement to you concerning our text amendment for the environmentally sensitive district of Paris Mountain, I talked about our two-year journey to get to this point. Within the Paris Mountain community, we had a lot of discussions and a lot of meetings to craft a proposal that could be recommended by staff, and they were very helpful in the process, as I previously mentioned, and we sincerely appreciate that. I also mentioned that we should keep moving toward to further strengthen protections for the ESDPM, and that's what I'd like to talk to you briefly about tonight. At first reading, Councilor Gaye suggested that we should modify our amendment to allow single-family detached dwellings within the ESDPM only, and that's effectively what we've done, with some uses still allowed, conditionally and by special exception such as private recreation. One thing we didn't accomplish in this text amendment was a restriction on short-term rentals. It's something we think warrants attention because it's become a problem in the community, and we'd like to do something about it. My family has been personally affected. We've had multiple instances where noise, parking, and trash have been a problem, and that's affected our quality of life. We've had guests of short-term renters parking right in front of the signs on our property that say "private" and "no trespassing," just to walk away and attend a party. We've had bears repeatedly crossing our property to get to two large containers that regularly overflow with trash after multiple groups of tenants have stayed in short-term rentals in a single week. And the bears do what bears do. They try to take the trash can back to their den, back across our property, dragging it and leaving a big mess behind that we've had to take care of. We've been awakened in the middle of the night by large parties on more than one occasion. I'd like to take a moment to play just a little bit of a recording that I have here. I'm not going to let it go because of time, but that was at 3:00 a.m. on a Monday morning. From the window on the far side of our house, my 91-year-old mother-in-law lives on the near side of that house, and she had pounding music going through her walls for several hours. We did call the police. They eventually showed at 5:00 a.m. because they had other things to take care of, understandably, but it's been a big problem. I'm going to skip ahead. In the coming weeks, I'll be reaching out to each of you to ask for just 30 minutes of your time so I can shed further light on the situation in the ESDPM with regards to short-term rentals and hopefully work with you to come up with a solution that you can support for future text amendment for the ESDPM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valente.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is James Sheets. His topic is 10(c)(text amendment) Paris Mountain.
Welcome, Mr. Sheets.
Hi, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you who worked on these changes that you're suggesting and recommending for ESDPM. I think they're really wonderful and needed, and in some cases, they go just where they should. In some cases, we'd like to see more. But nonetheless, one of the cases that I think is important to recognize, Section 2, 8.8, colon, 5.7, is the administrative applications. I think anything that's not in strict verbatim compliance should definitely go to the Planning Commission after it goes to staff, and that was excluded in the issuance of the amendment. So if you'd include Planning Commission in that, I think that would be a good step. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets.
The next speaker is Tommy Reese. His topic is 10(c)(text amendment) Paris Mountain.
Welcome, Ms. Reese.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here again, but to thank you all for giving your attention to really strengthening the ESDPM and making it significant. I'm asking you to vote yes on that item tonight, 10(c), the text amendments to Article 4, the definitions, Article 6, a table, and Article 8, Section 8, colon, 5, ESDPM, the actual zoning regulations. We all agree that ESDPM needs to be improved to provide significant environmental protection for this unique environmentally sensitive area, and a yes vote on this item tonight will take a large step towards that. Let me remind you that since summer of 2023, yes, over two years ago, several of us long-term Paris Mountain residents started working on this, talking with neighbors, conferring with leaders, consulting with staff. I've given up on counting the number of meetings or the pages of the drafts that we've done, but now we're here, or almost here. When this item was a former version, first introduced to county council, we all acknowledged that it still needed some refinement, and luckily, you all agreed that that could be done through the process as it worked its way through. So we did persevere with staff, and now we're proud to have collaboratively refined the proposed set of amendments that we know, when adopted, can really preserve the interests of the Paris Mountain residents, protect the future of the mountain environmentally, and with the latest version as approved by Planning and Development Committee, it also earned the approval of the county staff to recommend it. The improved, simpler, and shorter set of amendments before you tonight is ready and waiting for what I very much hope will be your enthusiastic approval for Item 10(c) on your agenda. Again, thank you very much for working with us on this and for protecting Paris Mountain for generations to come.
Thank you, Ms. Reese.
Mr. Chairman, our last speaker is Emily Poole, and her topic is 10(c)(text amendment) Paris Mountain.
Welcome, Ms. Poole.
Good evening. My name is Emily Poole, and I am the Upstate Staff Attorney at the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, or SCELP. SCELP is a nonprofit public interest law firm, and our mission is to use legal expertise to protect land, water, and communities throughout South Carolina. I am here to share my support for Item 10(c) on tonight's docket, which are zoning text amendments to the environmentally sensitive district, Paris Mountain, or ESDPM. As I've said to you all before, let me begin by thanking each of you for your willingness to enact stronger protections for Paris Mountain. Because Paris Mountain is one of Greenville County's most precious and iconic places, we know we must do everything we can to shield the mountain from dangerous development and environmental degradation. Strengthening the provisions of the ESDPM zoning district is one of the most comprehensive ways that we can preserve this unique landscape and ecosystem from harm. The proposed amendments to the ESDPM section of the zoning ordinance that are before you tonight will no doubt help better protect Paris Mountain for generations to come. With a more robust and tense section in 8, colon, 5.1, the goal of preserving the natural environment, its unique features such as steep slopes, streams, and specimen trees, and all its habitats, sanctuaries, and sensitive species is placed front and center within the ordinance. Further, by increasing the minimum lot size in Section 8, colon, 5.5, creating a more robust framework for tree preservation in Section 8, colon, 5.10, and limiting light pollution in Section 8, colon, 5.11, this ordinance will better safeguard unique and diverse flora and fauna and the patchwork of habitats that weave through the mountain slopes. These efforts also protect streams, including the Reedy River headwaters, that are particularly vulnerable to pollution that would also flow downstream. Truly, the ESDPM zoning district amendments before you today represent the next step we can take to combat habitat disruption, impaired water quality, and disturbance of the mountain's ecological balance. Before I conclude, I do want to make a few clarifications that you all may have questions about. First, members of the Save Paris Mountain movement and I have been working in close collaboration with county staff for the last several months to create a version of this ordinance that is protective of the environment and implementable and compatible with staff duties and workloads. The version of the ESDPM text amendments and Item 10(c) of tonight's agenda are supported by staff and have also received a Clean Bill of Health from the county attorney's office. Second, I want to note that there are two sets of proposed amendments to the ESDPM on tonight's agenda. I would like to emphasize my support for the more robust changes to the ESDPM that are Item 10(c), rather than the changes that were part of an earlier version that did not yet have all the provisions we were hoping to include, which is Item 10(b). So, to now conclude, together we can better protect Paris Mountain's sensitive environment for all who cherish it. I urge you all to support Item 10(c) on your agenda and vote favorably on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. I'll start with A, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement, Project Elk. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Elk. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
I consider this public hearing closed.
Thank you. Move to Item B, Terrapines Special Tax District Tax Levy. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Terrapines Special Tax District Tax Levy. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to approve the Terrapines Special Tax District's petition for an increase to its current tax levy.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
That being heard, I consider this public hearing closed.
Thank you. Move to Item C, Foothills Fire Service Area Millage Request. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Foothills Fire Service Area Millage Request. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to provide for the millage rate to be levied by the Foothills Fire Service Area. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, I consider the public hearing closed.
Thank you. And the final one for this is D, Land Development Regulations Amendment, Cluster Housing Moratorium. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to temporarily suspend the approval of new cluster developments and open space residential developments in Greenville County through a moratorium. Ooh, I said it. In order to review Amendment Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and Section 7.2 of the Greenville County Zoning Ordinance, pursuant to the state, prudent to the state law and county policy. Do we have any speakers, Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bradley, we have one speaker, Audrey Pazin, in favor of the proposed.
Welcome, Ms. Pazin.
Nice to be back, thank you. I hope you can pick me up on the microphone. Very good. Well, you know, I love this. You guys are doing very good work, and I appreciate the Paris Mountain stuff, but you don't let me talk about everything, so I have to limit myself. This ordinance is beautiful in many respects. I'm going to offer some tweaks, but I want to start by saying I love the source of this ordinance, which is my favorite enabling act in the state, the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act. It's a mouthful, but it is the law that gives you the opportunity to do exactly what you're proposed to do. And here are the tweaks, and this relates to something I can't talk about too much because it's a case I'm litigating, but I will tell you this. Planning Commission has a starring role in all things related to land development. Don't take my word for it. Read the ordinance that you're using to do this moratorium, and there is where the tweaks come in. You have two places where you refer to the role of the planning staff coming in, and you have them coming in to potentially, here's where it is. It said, "On the recommendation of the staff and/or Planning Commission," you might, take out staff. You hear recommendations from Planning Commission. Nothing in the state law ordains staff to make recommendations to you. That's one change you should make. Another, and it's a minor tweak again, it refers to staff during the moratorium period doing these things, interacting and finding out things, and they can have a subsidiary assisting role. Planning Commission under state law is in charge of this type of thing, so I think you should alter that language. I'll say one other thing here, the space itself. I live in a development on Paris Mountain where the developer really sought to crunch in a lot of additional lots long after he had his initial proposal, and there was a lot of conflict about what should density look like on Paris Mountain, and you're taking care of that very nicely with the Paris Mountain stuff. But it's a great example of how a failure to deal with this cluster housing can create a real mess, because the quality of land that is left as open space can be very, can be nothing. It can be slopes you can't walk on. It could be a drainage pit. It could be very, very, very useless to the people. And the idea of open space and cluster is it's supposed to have a trade-off. A little bit more development for a lot of benefit for the residents. You can create that, and I really hope that you work very hard to do that. One last tweak. You refer to the legislative, original legislative intent in here. Get rid of that. The language of the ordinance reflects your legislative intent, and nobody's going to know what the historic intent was anyway. So those are some drafting tweaks. It's a beautiful product. You can make it a tiny bit better, and please vote yes on it. It's good to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is ordinances at third reading. We'll start with CZ 2025-040. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 593 Old Hunts Bridge requesting rezoning from S1 to RS. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 20 Old Augusta Road Distension in Augusta Road requesting rezoning from C1 and C2 to S1. I move adoption, move for adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-042.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at Old Bramble Road requesting rezoning from FRD. The FRD major change in RMA. I make a motion to adopt this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say.
I did have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Shaw?
In this project from FRD to RMA, is it, it looks like it's allowing a small portion to go from residential, single-family to apartments, RMA? Reading the notes on it?
I believe, and we probably get clarification on this, this is more of a boundary adjustment for a person's property line that would have been affected by the development itself. And it's like a small, a .4 acre, I believe, is what it was on the change.
Mr. Chairman. And this was so that property, Steve, this is for the property owners could keep their poo and their building by moving, by changing this.
Okay.
Look at project information.
Okay, I, because it looked like it was, I had read on here about more multifamily residential would be the result or the availability of more multifamily, which I thought we're trying to get away from apartments.
Mr. Shaw, actually, if you look under the staff section, under project information, it's like the bottom of page one is a good little snippet there about the .4 acre and the reasoning.
So the neighbor would be getting more residential multifamily?
Right, but she currently, it just is a property line shift essentially is what it says in the documents, too.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. We'll move to Item B, Caesar's Head Fire Service Area Millage Request and Fire Protection Contract with Cedar Mountain Fire and Rescue. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caesar's Head Fire Service Area Millage Request and Fire Protection Contract with Cedar Mountain Fire and Rescue. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that I move to adoption at the third reading an ordinance to provide for an increase to the millage rate levied by Caesar's Head Fire Service Area and to authorize the chairman of county council and the county administrator to renew the contract for fire protection and first responder services with Cedar Mountain Fire Rescue.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item C, Transfer of Property, 10.9 acres around Woodside Mill Community. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Transfer of Property, 10.9 acres around Woodside Mill Community. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance to authorize the transfer of approximately 10.9 acres of real property located around the Woodside Mill Community to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority and to authorize the execution of deeds and any other documents and agreements related thereto.
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, four opposed.
Thank you. Motion passes. Move to Item D, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial and Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Elk. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial and Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Elk. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move for the adoption at third reading an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. E, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Vista. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Vista. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move for the adoption at third reading an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. F, Dark Points Operating Company LLC, formerly Project AIM, Fee-in-Lie of Tax Agreement. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dark Points Operating Company LLC, formerly Project AIM, Fee-in-Lie of Tax Agreement. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move for an adoption at the third reading an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in-lie-of-tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and the Dark Points Operating Company LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak on this topic. I was looking into this, and from what I understand, this is a data center. Am I correct? To be located in our county. There's 25 employees that would be hired, and I just feel like we need to do a little bit more in-depth looking into what this would do to our power grid. If you look at the lower part of the state, Sandy Cooper is already placing some restrictions on power due to our growth, not just personal bodies, but industrial growth, business growth, and data centers take up a lot of power and water, and we already have in excess of 30 data centers in the state. So just to make sure that we're covering everything and to give everybody an opportunity, I would like to make a motion to hold this and let us look at it at Cal.
Okay. Any, Counselor Farmer?
We spoke about this in the Finance Committee, and that was my very first question, was like, was this going to do to our grid? And they reassured us that Duke Energy has more than enough capacity to have the status center up and running.
I feel like I want to hear that from a third party. If we take this on and we're wrong, it could limit, not only limit what we do, but just like in the case of Sandy Cooper, if you use power down at Ori County between 3 and 6, they increase your rate. So I want to make sure that the capacity is available.
Counselor Russo, now come here.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor Farmer, the Finance Committee, that I believe Ms. Long, Farmer Blunt, and several other people were in that meeting. He reiterated to us that Duke, that Duke Power is extensively involved in this, in the process of them planning the expansion, so they do have more than enough capability.
Well, and I'll just speak to this, and then I'll move here as well, that if I recall correctly, one of the conversation pieces in finance also was that this is not the data farm, the data center that does draw the immense amounts of power. They specified that this was a different type of data center. I don't know the specifics off the top of my head, but just wanted to put that out there. Counselor Seaman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind my colleagues that we're sitting at third reading on an item that's been vetted both by the Finance Committee. Really, let's start back from vetted by our colleagues through GADC, presented to us, vetted by the Finance Committee. I think perhaps even passed unanimously at Finance. Came here, we passed it at second reading. The time to have these questions is not when we're about ready to finish and put some new jobs on our market here, so I will certainly be voting in favor and hope my other colleagues will do the same.
Anybody else before we entertain Counselor Long's motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will.
Shaw.
Thank you. The, a lot of us here had gone to the SCAC conference over the summer. It cost the taxpayers a lot of money, and people coming back say, well, we learned stuff there. That's why the taxpayers are spending the money for us to go there. I've sat through economic development segments there where they've specifically said these filos are only to be used for manufacturing. I don't think this is manufacturing. I think we need to listen to what they just told us about economic development, which is, we do it for manufacturing. Second, third reading is for a reason. It, we don't cut off our reason at second reading. Second to third reading gives us more time. A hold would give us more time, and I support Ms. Long's motion.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Question has been called, and the motion is to hold the item.
Chairman, for a second.
Mr. Attorney.
I may have misheard, but I thought Ms. Long said it was a motion to hold and take it up in Cal. We can't have both. It's either got to be a motion to hold here on the floor or a motion to refer to Cal. It's either got to be a motion to hold here on the floor or a motion to refer to Cal. You can't, you can't have both motions in one motion.
I make a motion to hold.
All right. Everybody understand the motion?
So, I'm confused. Um, you wanted to hold instead of the committee, or are you just trying to kill it by holding it? Or are you?
I'm trying, no, I'm trying to get more information because I feel like we need more information. I think this could impact our power grid and affect, and affect a lot of people, including ourselves. So since this came to finance committee and the person benefiting provided the information, I would like to get some more third-party information.
Just a question back to her, who was that third party person?
We could do some more research, um, reach out to Duke Power, reach out to Sandy Cooper. Um, there's other states that are going through the same thing. Wyoming, they're having issues and they didn't think they would have issues. I've just been looking to it more in depth this week and I just want to make sure we're not making a mistake.
All right, roll call's been requested.
This is for the hold, a yes.
Correct, this is for the motion to hold.
Chairman, you have four in favor, eight in opposition.
All right, so the motion fails. Now we will entertain the, well, there hasn't been a motion yet.
Actually.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Collins, when you read it in.
So now back to the original motion for item F.
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested. Thank you. The motion passes. We'll move to item G, Span America Medical Systems Incorporated, formerly Project Up, Fee in lieu of Tax Agreement, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Span America Medical Services Incorporated, formerly Project Up, Fee in lieu of Tax Agreement. Mr. Chairman, make a motion, I move for adoption at the third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution of the delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Span America Medical Systems Incorporated with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item H, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Span America Medical Systems Incorporated, formerly Project Up, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Span America Medical Services Incorporated, formerly Project Up. Mr. Chairman, the motion, I move for an adoption at the third reading and ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move to I, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, All Source Enterprises LLC, Safe Industries, formerly Project Precedent, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville County Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, All Source Enterprises LLC, DBA Safe Industries, formerly Project Precedent. Mr. Chairman, the motion is I move for an adoption at the third reading and ordinance to amend the agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park, Project Precedent.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. J, All Source Enterprises LLC, Safe Industries, formerly Project Precedent, Fee in lieu of Tax Agreement, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All Source Enterprises LLC, DBA Safe Industries, formerly Project Precedent, Fee in lieu of Tax Agreement. The motion, Mr. Chairman, I move for an adoption at the third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and All Source Enterprises LLC, DBA Safe Industries with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move on to ordinances at second reading. Start with CZ 2025 dash zero forty-five, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 10 East Main Street Taylors requesting rezoning from R20 to OD. The planning commission and committee recommend an approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025 dash zero forty-six, Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 125 Terry Road requesting rezoning from RR3 to RR1. The planning, the planning commission and the committee recommend a denial. On behalf of the, of the committee, I move to deny this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025 dash zero forty-seven, Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 2056 Highway 418 and Virgin School Road requiring, requesting rezoning from RR3 to RR1. The planning commission and the committee recommend a denial. On behalf of the committee, I move to deny the ordinance at second reading.
Favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025 dash zero forty-eight, Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 145 Chapman Grove Road requesting rezoning from RR3 to AG. The planning commission and committee recommend an approval. On behalf of the committee, I move to approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 2025 dash zero five zero, Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at Avenue Road and Richards Avenue requesting rezoning from RMHP to R6. The planning commission and committee recommend approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
You all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025 dash zero fifty-two, Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 395 Conestee Road, 2nd Avenue and 3rd Street requesting rezoning from C1 and RMA to C2. The planning commission and committee recommend a denial. On behalf of the committee, I move to deny this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move to item B, Greenville County Zoning Text Amendment, Altamont Road Access, CZ 2025 dash zero forty-four, Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A zoning text amendment to amend section 8.5, ESD PM Environmental Sensitive District, Paris Mountain, of the Greenville County zoning ordinance regarding district intent and protecting public safety on Altamont, Altamont Road. The complaint, the planning commission and the committee recommend a denial. On behalf of the committee, I move to deny this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
If I could, as, Mr. Chairman, um, as the, I think I filed this one, I think I could just pull it instead of us doing a vote on it. I don't think pulling it would hurt the one behind it. Um, I'd rather it be pulled, so I, I withdraw this if that's legal.
Can we legally do that now or something we should have done prior to the meeting?
Oh, no, no, we just do it now.
Mr. Attorney.
Problem is, we have a motion on the floor at this point. It had to be pulled before the motion at least, so we have to deal with a motion to, to hear right now unless that motion will withdraw.
Okay. I was just trying to make it easy, so no worries, we'll vote on it.
So, everybody?
You please kill this, this one.
And the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item C, Text Amendment, Article Four, Definitions, Article Six, Table 6.1 and Article Eight, Section 8.5, ESD PM Environmentally Sensitive District, Paris Mountain, CZ 2025 dash zero fifty-three, Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A zoning text amendment to amend Article Four, Article Six, Table 6.1 and Article Eight, Section 8.5, uh, the ESD PM Environmental Sensitive District of Paris Mountain, of the Greenville County zoning ordinance to strengthen environmental protection for the ESD PM. The planning commission and committee recommend approval as amended. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval at second reading and I have an amendment to that.
State your amendment.
I move, I move to amend the ordinance to reflect the changes outlined in the redlined version included in the council's agenda packet.
Does everybody understand the motion?
Could you say that one again, uh, Mr. Bradley?
The amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
I moved to amend the ordinance to reflect the change outlined in the redlined version included in the council's agenda packet.
Oh.
Just, just, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure that you, we're voting on your amendment, not the actual passage of the ordinance.
Yeah, the amendment, yeah, correct.
Amendment.
Dr. Shaw, that give you?
Well, I don't know if we got a packet. Are you talking about online?
Yeah, you're, you're the one that came out to us on Friday.
What are you talking about at, right now, this one online?
It, it.
It hasn't changed from Friday.
It includes the amendment in the packet.
So the one that came out Friday is the same one we see right now?
Right, but we have to amend it because the amendment came out of planning and development. So we have to amend it on the floor.
But that, that was reflected in the Friday one.
Right, which is what we're taking up currently.
Yes, sir, I understand. I'm just trying to say the one we have on our, we don't have a packet here with us. Usually we have a packet here. We don't have one, we just have it online, on, on the screen.
Hmm.
This is the one that came out on Friday. Is that all we're saying?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's all I was asking.
All right. Does everybody understand the motion to amend? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I move to approve the ordinance as amended. I'm, I'm sorry.
Can I ask before that, too? So it seemed like maybe there are a couple more tweaks. Do we want to make, allow for amendments at third if we want to add any additional language around, um, the rent, the short-term rental piece between now and third?
My, my understanding was that they were, the advocates were comfortable with the way this is right now, just because of the circumstances right now. That maybe that would interfere with, um, the consensus of passing it at this time.
All right, well, I'm going to make a motion that we allow for amendments at third, in case we change our minds.
Everybody understand the motion?
I like it.
Any questions?
That's what the readings are for?
Would an amendment about short-term housing be, um, um, applicable to this? And, um, I forget the word.
Well, it's Germaine because it's actually, it's actually in the, it's in the text already.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I guess my question here is to the county attorney is, do we accurately describe a short-term house anywhere?
You know, currently we have, um, the county has not stepped into that arena yet. I know over the years there have been talk over, about this being a county-wide thing that would, uh, be approached. Uh, that hasn't like merged up this, this session yet, but, uh, that is one of the things that's been out there. But now, so far, this would be the first foray into that area that the county has taken.
Okay, thank you. Well, to my colleagues, and I, I would like us to consider that we have language in there which we don't define anywhere else, in an ordinance anywhere. So I would say that as much as I would like to see, you know, I like what I see there and I, I agree with it, I think we're setting ourselves some legal troubles putting that in there right now because we don't have accurately defined what a short-term rental is. So then, so I guess cited for.
So do you feel like we almost need to take it out here, then? Like, is that what you're thinking?
I would think take it out unless we want to put in there a short-term rental is.
Well, so, so amendments at third would be helpful if we need to figure that out between now and then.
Yeah, but that, that was the problem. I was going to make a motion to amend that section, but I'm happy with it, whether it amended at the third reading.
Thank you.
So, to be clear, the motion we're voting on currently is to allow for amendments at third?
To suspend the rules. I have a question for, for Ms. Seaman. Um, my vote on that would be based upon, are you, what's your advocacy for this?
Well, I was listening to what the residents were saying and I felt like I was hearing language that maybe they'd like us to shore up the language around it. So, um, I'm fully supportive as is. I was just coming off of what people were saying tonight about it.
I, I agree. I, I just wanted to make sure, you know, because I, I think it's important restrictions. I think that the short-term rentals are abusing, abusing them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, okay, I didn't know. That's why I thought I'd ask.
This just gives us the ability to change it if needed before the final reading.
Correct. I'm going to, could we call the question on this one?
Everybody understand the motion?
What is she so pissed?
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Now, I still make, I make up, uh, I move to approval of the ordinance as amended.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move to item D, Amendment to Ordinance Number 5577, Section One, Sunset Provision, Counselor Bradley.
I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to amend ordinance number 5577, which updated, updated design standards for septic developments in the unzoned areas of the county and established countywide refrigerant buffers requirements to change the sunset provision to ordinance from January 2nd to 26th to January 2nd, 2028.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Collins?
Um, can I make a motion? Motion to, uh, suspend the date to be indefinite.
The, so, an amendment to?
Suspend the sunset clause.
It's a motion to amend.
All right. So, to indefinite versus the two-year extension?
That is correct, thank you.
Why is that?
I just don't think it's something that's, uh, going to change anything over the next two years with our water runoffing, the data that they're presenting to us. The riparian buffer needs major attention, too, and one of the biggest, uh, criterias as far as pollutants with the watershed is from septic systems which is being regulated. So I think with this date coming up every two years, that's just stuff to look forward and going on, just remove it.
All right.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I want to be heard on this.
Counselor.
It's not going to kill us if we put an indefinite date in there. But I think the, the, the impetus, the burden should be on us to look at this stuff and periodically come up with, um, an exercise where we have to look at it and make a decision. And when you take that date out of there, all of a sudden, we've got no pressure on ourselves. We are telling people what they can and can't do with their property and I think there should be sunset provisions to protect people in the abuse of government by not looking at these decisions periodically. So I'd be opposed to your amendment.
And I appreciate that, but, uh, to work on this, you can always bring it back up at any given sunset that you want to put on yourself, but at the same time, um, that should apply to everything, not just septic systems.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just curious how this would square with people who only have septic available to them. We don't have water in all parts and sewer in all parts of the county, so are we, I just, I'm, I'm curious about not, if we sunset it forever, like, I don't know, are we, I'm sorry, I'm not articulating this very well, but I just worry about putting ourselves in a situation where we're not allowing people to do what they want with their property because we, they can't do septic.
One, I, I don't know who we should ask in this setting, but. One, I, I don't know who we should ask in this setting, but I know that we had the sunset for two years prior. Have we had any negative instances as a result of that of the first two years?
Not, nothing that's come to our office, but that would normally be in the form of a lawsuit, so nothing that's come to us.
Haven't had any, any litigation in, in that realm yet?
No, not yet.
Vice Chairman?
Assistant, Mr. Counselman Chief, so Seaman's, this is only for 10 houses or more. Doesn't bother one, two, three, 10 houses or more than one of this, this amendment.
With all due respect, Mr. Bradley, that also applies to riparian buffer, does it not?
It does.
Okay. So I just, I mean, there are people that agree with the riparian buffer and the, and the sewage, sewer, um, septic tank, um, rules, um, but the fact that there have been people in this community that have had to wrestle with these issues over the last couple of years, knowing that that sunset provision is coming, was coming, was a good thing. If we take this off the table, I think it creates a lackadaisical, government knows best, we don't need to do anything about it because there's no, you know, there's no time sensitivity to these discussions. I, I just don't think that's a good thing for someone's private property rights. We ought to have these discussions periodically if we're gonna have them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor.
It would be my understanding that this was actually to kind of make the, you know, septics are pretty bad for the environment. I may live on one, and I know, I get it, but uh, you know, there's, there's really no other option in parts of the county. I think what this really was designed to, people who own 100-plus acres out in the unincorporated zones, hundreds of acres, to prevent them from putting 1,000 houses on 100 acres, uh, because of, because of, with septic systems. So it, if I'm correct, it essentially made a lot, you had to have a little larger lot to reduce the number of septic systems you could have. So honestly, I, and the sunset in it, I don't think would hurt anybody other than protect our environment indefinitely.
Counselor McGahey, anybody else?
Yes, sir, if I may add, just a follow-up.
Collins?
You know, a sunset is just giving a, a, an automatic, uh, trigger to say this is coming up. You know, let's just do it in a way of, with all due respect, a sunrise clause, if you want to bring it up, bring it up on the agenda. Okay? Uh, I know that sounds kind of sarcastic, and I don't mean it that way, Counselor, uh, but at the same time, uh, when the runoff water, uh, presentation about two months ago was in, and she said one of the biggest problems were, um, the riparian buffers, which is also mentioned in here, but at the same time, I just don't see where, we haven't had any issues, and when you go to your property, you can develop your property. I'm all for property rights. But at the same time, once you sell that property to develop, now you have to conform to what we provide and what we pass. It is not taking someone's property rights away. It's just giving them the ability that we've got to protect the water stream, and we're the stewards of this land. And I think this is a measure, if you have an issue with it, then bring it up, put it on the agenda, and we'll talk about it. Be a sunrise clause. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I hate to, to say it this way, but I think too, just to try to somehow explain to the public what we're arguing about up here, someone could, next meeting, make a resolution to take this up in two years and pass it that way, and we still entertain it in two years. There's nothing really different, other than there's not a set date in which we have to take, uh, take it up versus when we can. Correct? Dr. Fant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, um, was obviously a proponent of this when we did it, and I think one of the compromises with, uh, Mr. Tripp at the time was to do the, the two-year sunset. I will say this, and I don't think there's any argument among anybody on this body, that this is one of the pieces, one of the few pieces that we've monitored and watched closely, that has actually done what we intended it to do. It has actually done exactly what we intended it to do. You and I have never voted against since we've been here, so I, as much as I'd like to go along with you-
Ooh, you keep cheating off my screen.
I, I, in the spirit of compromise, um, you know, I, I would really love to get rid of it completely, and then if it becomes a problem, let's re, revisit, um, but I could, no, I'm not fooling with you tonight. I could, um, um, I can live with the two-year extension, even though it just really, those things just ruin the environment. The water tables in lower Greenville County continue to rise. We have a fiduciary responsibility to our environment to protect it, not dump nitrates in creeks, rivers, and streams, and kill wildlife, and that's what we're doing. And I'd really like to get rid of it, but I'd already agreed to do the two-year, so I don't want to look like I'm flopping around and changing my mind at the last minute. But I can live with the two years. That's what y'all want to do.
Thank you, Dr. Fant. Anybody else? The motion currently is to amend, to remove the sunset provision in the motion.
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, if I may still, if you're to remove the sunset clause, that would be a yes vote?
Yes. Correct.
Is, uh, just a point of information, isn't the whole thing a sunset clause? I mean, that's what this amendment?
Well, I believe the original, when we passed it before, the, the sunset was added to the, to the ordinance, or to the motion that was made, so-
Right, and this would be to extend that sunset clause, so I'm just wondering, what, what is the vote here?
It is, it's to remove it, is the amendment requested by Counselor Collins.
If we- So then it ends on as, and no, there's no sunset clause, it's just, I got you, I got you. Okay, thank you.
Roll call's been requested.
Man, you don't ever vote with me, so.
I always vote with you.
Mr. Chairman, you have five in favor, seven in opposition.
All right, so the motion fails?
Mr. Chairman, my vote is incorrect. I got twisted. Mine's a yes, actually.
All right, so that would be a six-six, so the motion still fails.
Right, thank you.
All right, so now we are moving on to the original motion, read by Counselor Bradley. Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
This is a two-year extension, correct?
Let me just be heard on this, because if you remember two years ago, um, I was actually in favor of the septic tank piece of it. The riparian buffer is what I was scared of, and I know there's people in the audience that want this riparian buffer. I think, I don't know that we've had enough study on the riparian buffer itself. There's, there's a lot of nuances to the riparian buffer, um, requirements, and that's why originally I said, I'm fine with septic, because I don't think we should be polluting our rivers and streams with that either, but let's put the two-year sunset in there. And I think it got applied to the septic and the riparian buffer. Um, but I, I just think on, on the riparian buffer specifically, even though this applies to both of them, I, I think we ought to come back and look at that periodically, because the water, the, the, the water in this county is changing, and, you know, more buildings that come, it's changing the flow of things, and so I think we've got to be cognizant of that and, and just look at it periodically, rather than-
And Counselor Tripp, I don't disagree either, and I think it might have been Dr. Fant when we originally passed this. He had put up the motion or suggestion for us to split these into two separate ordinances, which probably would have made this a whole different conversation, so maybe that's something we can entertain in the future as well, if we need to. Um, so thank you. Anybody else before we vote on the motion?
I do, Mr. Chairman, before that, I-
Dr. Shaw.
I, thank you. I, um, Madam Clerk, I apologize. I did vote the right way on that one. Thank you. And I'd want, didn't want the vote to go beyond this one without that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, real quick-
It's Labor Day.
Counselor Collins?
On the, um, when the presentation from the runoff lady with the, um, presentation she gave a couple of months ago, she said one of the biggest, the, one of the best natural cleansing of any potential septic or other human feces in the streams is an expanded minimal 100-foot riparian buffer. So I, I know that ties into it, but she said that's the most natural and effective way of doing it, other than millions of dollars. So those of you that were in that presentation should recall that, but, uh, that's gonna come up with us pretty shortly. But I just want to make that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else?
I just, Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Counselor McGahey.
I think we all need to consider too, is, what's the most precious resource we have in our county? The water. You can't live without it. It's the one thing on earth you have to have, uh, besides air, unless you're a fish, well, then you can't live either if you don't have water or that. So, uh, my point being is, we sit here, and I, I'm finding it hard for one of my colleagues to sit down there and argue about how this is, you know, he's so concerned about this and that, when it, it, are you not concerned about the water, and to say that it's, it's not settled science that our water's going bad, or we have septic problems, or, I live on the Anari River. Trust me, we have water runoff problems. Anari, when I first moved here 10 years ago, would come up four or five feet. It comes regularly up 30, 40 feet now, and luckily our house is high enough that doesn't sit, doesn't get done. But we have water problems in our county, and to say that we don't, and to sit here, it's ludicrous.
All right. Anybody else?
I'll choose to ignore your comments.
I got one suggestion.
Dr. Fant?
And I, and we don't have to open this tonight. I'm, now, this is like splitting debate. I, I, I know you just don't know where I'm going with this. Uh-
This, Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt? This is not a debate about the quality of our water. It's about whether we as a body are going to periodically look at the rules that we are setting for other people's land. That is, all this is about. I live a lot closer to the water than you do. I live close to the Reedy River. It's in my backyard, and I also have a farm that has the Reedy River and Horse Creek that runs through it. So I'm well aware of water quality in Greenville County.
All right.
Call, call a question.
Let's get, let's get this back to order. The question's been called. So all in favor of-
Repeat the question, please.
The original motion, which is to extend the sunset provision by two years, January 2nd, 2026, to January 2nd, 2028.
Roll call?
Requested?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Are we at second, right?
Second reading.
Can we do some amendments at third?
Too late now.
Mr. Chairman, you have ten in favor, two in opposition.
Thank you. The motion passes. Item E, Land Development Regulations Amendment, Cluster Housing Moratorium. Counselor Bradley.
I move for the approval at second reading, ordinance to temporarily suspend approval of new cluster developments and open space residential developments in Greenville County through a moratorium and order to view an amendment, Article 11, of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and Section 7.2 of the Greenville County Zoning Ordinance pursuant to state law and county policy.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park, 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park, 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. Mr. Chairman, the motion that I move for an approval at the second reading, ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park to include certain property and other matters related thereto.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. G, Terrapines Special Tax District Tax Levy. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Terrapines Special Tax District Tax Levy. Mr. Chairman, the motion that I move for approval at the second reading, an ordinance to approve the Terrapines Special Tax District petition for an increase to its current tax levy.
You all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. H, Foothills Fire Service Area Millage Request. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Foothills Fire Service Area Millage Request. Mr. Chairman, the motion that I move for approval at the second reading, an ordinance to provide for the millage rate to be levied by the Foothills Fire Service Area.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move on to ordinances at first reading. A, Terrapines Estates Special Tax District Boundary Adjustment. Counselor McGahey.
Terrapines, Terrapines Estates Special Tax District Boundary Adjustment. I present for first reading and ordinance to enlarge the boundaries of the Terrapines Estates Special Tax District to include real property continuous to the district located at 321 Terramont Drive.
Thank you, and that will stay on the council floor. Item B, Establish Car Wash Facility Standards. Counselor Collins?
Mr. Chairman, ordinance for first reading is establish a car wash facility standards. As noted on the county council agenda, I present for the first reading and ordinance to establish a minimum setback and noise standards for car wash facilities in unincorporated Greenville County to protect residential areas from excessive noise, and request this ordinance be referred to the appropriate committee.
Thank you, and we will refer that to Roads, Infrastructure, and Public Works. Next on the agenda, we have committee reports, committee of the whole. Counselor Bradley?
Mr. Chairman, Civil Action Number 2021-CP-23-05916. On behalf of the committee, I move to direct the county attorney to accept Civil Action Number 2021-CP-23-0596. settlement is approved in the committee of the whole.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested.
You have ten in favor, two in opposition.
All right, thank you. The motion passes. Next, we will move to public comments. Ms. Stone?
We have two speakers. The first is Diane Vreeland, and her topic is county administrators' contract.
Welcome, Ms. Vreeland.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Diane Vreeland, on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, 413 Heather Falls Lane in Simpsonville. I have received numerous inquiries regarding the status of Mr. Cornell's contract, which was to end December 31st, 2024, but has been extended for an additional year and is now ending December 31st, 2025. You should know upfront that there's an appetite among Greenville County residents to replace Mr. Cornell. Having said that, here are some of the questions residents of Greenville County are asking. One, is Mr. Cornell retiring, or is he planning to negotiate a new contract and/or extend his current contract? Two, if it is Mr. Cornell's desire to negotiate and/or extend said contract, are a majority of the Greenville County council members amenable to doing so, and why? If the council is not willing to negotiate or extend a new contract with Mr. Cornell, or if Mr. Cornell plans on retiring, that leads to new questions. One, as of this date, has the council started a search for a new county administrator? Two, is the council looking to hire someone from within the department only, or will the search be extended to talent from outside the department, the town, and/or the state? Three, what will the projected hire date be for a new county administrator? Four, what procedures are in place to ensure a smooth transition? Five, will the county administrator's salary and benefit package be lowered to be more in line with other county administrators in the state of South Carolina? And six, does the council have enough funds in the current budget available to buy out Mr. Cornell's exit package, and if not, what options does the council have? Additionally, are the exit package terms and contract available to the public for review? In pursuit of transparency, the public deserves to know what direction the council is taking regarding the most prominent position in Greenville County. With only four months to go until Mr. Cornell's current contract ends in December, time is of the essence, especially if you're going to conduct a national search for a new county administrator. I do believe that this process should not be fast-tracked, nor should it be rushed, so that we obtain the highest caliber person to fill this position. Greenville County residents deserve the best, and it is my hope that you can give the public some direction and also some clarity regarding this matter. I'd like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk, so it's part of the public record, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Vreeland. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, the last speaker is Audrey Pazin. Her topic-
Mr. Chairman, the last speaker is Audrey Pazin. Her topic is litigation against the county.
Welcome, Ms. Pazin.
Well, thank you once again. Sorry. I don't know when it was, maybe the last 20 or 30 years, it became invoked to refer to a good attorney as a bulldog. I don't think it's really complimentary. I think a gifted attorney is persuasive. And I'm going to invoke Dr. Fant with hope, because I hope to be persuasive with you tonight. I want to talk about how we relate as a county to litigation and to the attorneys that represent us, who we sometimes hire just to be bulldogs. You asked a great question, Chair Blatt, before, when you said, do we have any litigation concerning the septic or the riparian stuff? Something to learn from. Litigation is a lesson for all of you, to learn something about what you're doing here. And to learn about the litigation, you have to ask the attorneys what's happening. You have to actually look at the pleadings. Maybe you need to go to some hearings. I happen to have two cases now against the county. I can't talk about them ethically, except to say I would love to have mediation with you so I could tell you all about it in the right environment. And I also want to just say, without getting into it, I think you'd actually like what my position is. I think it very much harmonizes with where this particular council body is oriented. But leaving that as it is, and not talking about it, because I'm not going to get a bar grievance over this, I want you to know that as a party, and you are a party in these cases that are filed, you have an opportunity and actually a duty to direct your attorney. How things work now is that your attorney hires the best bulldog he can find, and that attorney litigates the case. To what end? Maybe you're not even aware of why are they fighting this case? It costs the taxpayers money, and the result may lead yet to more litigation and appeal. Because sometimes, very often, there's a hometown advantage for whoever the county hires, and they win at the local level, and they lose on the appeal because the case didn't really have merit. The point is this, you don't want to check your brain at the door. I was a family law litigator in Fort Lauderdale for about 15 years. There's not a rougher area of law to have to work in. And I insisted to my clients, don't check your brain at the door. I need you to be invested in this case. As a result of their involvement, we settled cases. We mediated cases. Much better results, always. There's finality, and a result you can live with, rather than what a judge tells you. So I'm suggesting and trying to persuade you, and hope that I can persuade you, to really pay attention to the litigation that you're involved in. All of it is a learning experience. And this particular body, this newly constituted body of council people, you care too much, and you're much too smart to check your brains at the door. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin.
Did I persuade you a little bit?
Next on the agenda, item we have, on the agenda is administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I really don't have a report, but I do want to clear up some misinformation that one of the speakers just threw out there. The county administrator's contract does not expire December 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have requests and motions by council members. Anybody have anything? Counsel Seaman?
I think it's Mr. Bradley's birthday.
It is. It is Vice Chair Bradley's birthday.
Happy birthday.
And, happy birthday. Liz says she wants to sing for you in just a moment.
I asked Benton to bring his guitar, but he don't, I don't see it.
Well, before I entertain the final motion, I'll just say I'm glad that everybody got back spirited from Labor Day, and I hope that everybody enjoyed tonight's spirited debate, and glad it didn't go too far. And with that, I'll entertain one final motion.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.